It's either Jim or Michael to do that.
Good evening. This is the Bennington Select Board meeting, May 12th, 2014, at 6:00 PM. We are at the Bennington Firehouse. And I'd like to welcome everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. First thing I want to do is introduce our Select Board. John McFadden to our far right, Justin Corcoran, this is James Carroll, I'm Greg Van Houten, Chair, Sharon Bush is our Vice Chair, Michael Keane, and Tom Jacobs on the far left. All are present. Stu Heard, our Town Manager, to the right, and Lynda Mermuth is recording. We generally meet the second and fourth Monday of every month, right here at the Firehouse on the third floor, at 6:00 PM. The next meeting will be an exception, with Memorial Day being on the 26th. We are going to be meeting on the 19th at Town Hall to sign warrants and take care of any town business that needs to be done. And then in June, we'll be back at second and fourth Monday. Okay. The first item is the minutes from the last meeting.
I move they be accepted as printed.
A motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? It's five in favor, two abstain. Two absentees last time. Now, we have several items on the agenda tonight, including the public hearing for the Shire's Housing Partnership. Are there any citizens that would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda at this point? We have a public mic over here, and we have a sit-down mic over here for anybody. Nothing off the agenda, okay? We will move on. Are there any questions on the warrants? We'll start with Tom.
Nope. One thing that continues to impress me is the town's use of local vendors. That's impressive when you look at the warrants that we sign each month. I appreciate that effort.
Michael?
No, and I echo Tom's point about the local vendors.
Sharon, do you have any questions?
Nothing this week, no.
James? Justin?
No.
John?
All set.
All right. I have nothing either. Thank you. We'll move on. It's 6:03. So what we're going to do is, we're going to move an agenda item ahead. We have a 6:15 scheduled public hearing, so I'm not going to move that forward in case there's someone trying to get here. I know a few people told me they were going to try and get here that might be struggling. So I'm going to jump to the Applegate deferral request. That was an item that was on the previous few agendas. Then, do I have any motions to reconsider or reapproach that? We had a significant letter from the Applegate folks asking us to reconsider that.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion to reconsider that?
I'll move that.
Have a second? Any discussion from the Board? Do we have any citizens that wanted to speak on that? We had gotten a letter. Michael Harrington is Town Staff, Economic and Community Development Director. Come forward, Mike.
Good evening. As you remember, the Applegate deferment was on the agenda at the last meeting, and it did not pass because it did not have enough votes. So Applegate Limited Housing Partnership and Housing Vermont have asked for reconsideration. And there is a member here from Housing Vermont, so I want to make sure he has an opportunity to speak and answer any questions that are left unanswered, and hopefully bring to some resolution. So I'm going to introduce Matt Moore, and he'll speak on the Applegate unless there's somebody else speaking about Applegate.
We have left a number of people speaking, the asset manager.
Sorry, Matt, could you come forward to one of the microphones? This is being recorded, so you want to stand up through by Michael?
Do we have three or four people? Or are we working?
Sure, bring them right up over there if you would, please. And ask folks to speak up. We have a lot of microphones here, but these are for the recording. We don't have a house PA, so anyone speaking, try to speak to the crowd. Thank you.
I'm just wondering a little bit, it was almost 10 after. We're going to get them halfway through this and shut these guys down.
I got five after up there.
Yeah, it's about five after.
We'll go.
Okay. Again, my name's Matt Moore, and I work for Housing Vermont. We're a statewide affordable housing developer. Our office is in Dorlins, and we work with local and regional housing organizations and entities around the state. We're happy to be back again tonight to provide additional information that the Select Board feels necessary for answering questions from the public. And as most of you know, we're here to ask for another deferral on the loan that has been made to the property. We have about eight to 12 months of redevelopment work that's ahead of us until we would actually start construction and refinance the property. So we have some time to come back if we need to, to further discuss this. But I think, as you probably know from the memo, we are asking for that action on the immediate deferral tonight. And I want to be upfront with folks here that we will be seeking a longer-term deferral, basically a refinance of this existing loan, as part of the project, where we will be seeking, ideally, a 30-year note, similar to all the other projects that we do in the state. This is an anomaly of, maybe there's a few projects that Housing Vermont has. We've developed about 3,500 units around the state. We work a lot with VCDP. We only have a handful of these loans that were 15-year loans with an interest rate. What we typically ask for, and what most towns graciously agree to, is to structure the loan as a 0% 30-year deferred loan to match up with the other financing. For all our projects, VCDP is not the only funding source. There's four, five, sometimes six or seven more sources, and there's a number of other sources that are in priority above the VCDP loans. I think it's important to know with Applegate, as with other projects, this was not a CDBG project. It was a project that was partially funded by CDBG, which is federal dollars that come to the state in the form of a block grant. So back in the day, it would be the government, namely HUD, deciding where they would build public housing. And over time, things changed. You know, with certain administrations, they've modified and put in new programs. And so with the CDBG program, instead of HUD telling or coming into Vermont or a town and saying, "We're going to build buildings here," they give a block grant to the state. Okay? Our tax dollars, federal tax dollars, go to the state, right? And then the state sets up a competitive process based on policy, statewide policies for housing and economic development. And then projects go to towns and ask them if we could apply for these funds for the project. It's highly competitive, and it's a very important funding piece. So I don't want to get in the weeds too much, but I just thought it would be important to have that background and to get some perspective on how we're looking ahead. So I'll let the rest of the folks speak here. We've got Erica from Housing Vermont, and we've got property managers and members representing AHI, and I'll let them take it away.
Good evening. I'm Erica. I work for Housing Vermont as an asset manager, and I work closely with these four women on issues relating to the property, capital needs, as well as day-to-day issues. And we're here to respectfully request that you defer the loan payment, simply because costs have skyrocketed for the property while we anticipate redevelopment. And given that, as well as the information we provided to you, neither of the options that we have to pay back the loan are desirable. It's quite distressing. It's an unfortunate situation to even have to contemplate it, but either cutting residence services programs or instituting a fairly strict rental increase would have impacts not only from Applegate but into the rest of the community. And we're here to lobby you for that. This is Sandy Bissett. She's the property manager at Applegate. She's been there for 17 years. This is Elaine Letourneau. Elaine Letourneau is probably our biggest champion. She is a board member. She is retired from the Bank of Bennington, and she's been on the board since the very beginning as well. Next is Kimberly Funk, and she is our Community Services Coordinator. She's been here for about 10 years. And last but not least, this is Kathy Luce. And Kathy Luce is the principal in Maloney Properties. And Maloney Properties was asked by BHFA to step in when HUD was not doing its job trying to get the property foreclosed upon from the previous owner. And without any real guidance from anybody, they stepped in in the interim while the property was redeveloped and then has subsequently finished, continued on. So I think Kathy, would you like to speak next?
Hi, good evening. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to talk about the commitment that the Town of Bennington has always consistently shown to Applegate. Back in the mid to late 90s, without the support of the Town of Bennington Building Inspector's Office, the property probably would have been shut down, and hundreds of families would have been put out on the curb. Larry McLeod and his staff were really instrumental in pushing the issue forward to address the substandard conditions. Many of you, I'm sure, remember, Applegate was a blight in the community. And since 1996, with the redevelopment, all of us collectively, including our partners in the Town of Bennington, have really transformed the community to be the jewel that it is that provides housing that's affordable to very low-income, working people. People who work in the low-paying jobs in Bennington live at Applegate. And the impact of having to pay this loan back would really devastate the people who live in this community. So we do ask you respectfully to reconsider and support the deferral request. Thank you very much.
I'd like to move that we defer the payment for a year.
For a year, yes. A motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead, John.
There's people to ask here.
So just to be clear, when we were looking at this originally, I think it was a couple meetings ago, and it was a deferral for one year?
Correct.
That's now changed. What we're looking is for larger deferral? Is that what I was hearing?
No, just for a year.
No, we need the one-year deferral in order to not technically be in default and to continue to work on securing our permitting and financing for the project. And I simply wanted to be upfront and give everyone in the community a heads-up that, you know, we're not just asking for a one-year deferral. We will be back to ask for a longer-term deferral that would be consistent with the rest of the financing, which is also from state and federal sources, 0% deferred 30-year financing.
Okay. And with that deferral, I think another piece of paper that we were reading said there's an interest rate that goes along with that deferment, so it'll be charged interest during this year? Or is that not true?
The current deferral.
Yes. It'll be 1%. So throughout this year, you guys are going to be, there's going to be interest on the loan that you'll eventually have to pay back anyway? Right.
The current loan accumulates 1% interest during the defer.
It's going to accrue interest, but I don't think they have to pay it.
Well, they will. Well, if they will, once they start paying.
Depending on the final decision, correct. After that, I was wondering, what was the plan moving into this 15-year mark? What was the plan?
For?
When moving into this 15-year mark, knowing that it was coming up, what was the plan and how to pay it back? Was it the two layouts that we have in front of us? So when this was coming up?
We anticipated that we would refinance the loan.
A new loan to work on new projects?
To rehab the property. Yes, the same as any rental property would do after a 15-year loan.
One of the concerns that I had that I had brought up last time is that the 15-year original deferral from the community block grant, is that's coming due, you're applying for another community block grant, is that correct? With another 15-year deferral period? Is that the cycle of which one expires and another comes and you apply for a new one? Can you speak to that process a little bit, please?
Sure, sure. Sometimes we ask, we apply for additional CDBG funding for a project that already has CDBG funding in it. It's not always the case that is not our preferred option. We have a preliminary budget for the project, and what we would like to do is not have to go back and ask VCDP and apply for additional funding. If we can secure the financing from the tax credit, the commercial loan, and some of our other sources, state sources, we would like to not have to do that.
My concern is with that process, it seems as though the project is not at all self-sustainable. What happens when that federal money runs dry?
There's no federal subsidy going to the property. In fact, the property has covenants on it that, because of the federal and state money that we received and the tax credits, which are private equity, capital raised from banks, insurance companies, et cetera, that usually covers about half of these properties, which are owned in private and are for-profit entities. The, when we receive funding, there's three, four, there's about four or so layers of covenants that restrict the rents that we can charge.
The community block grant originally comes from federal funds, is that correct?
It's capital, yes. Yes, it's capital funding. It is not an operating subsidy or rental assistance program. It is capital funding that is used to build or rehab affordable housing in the state.
So by operating subsidy, you mean, what would qualify as an operating subsidy?
An operating subsidy would be a Section 8 contract that's attached to the property, whereby the owner of the property has a contract from the federal government guaranteeing certain rent levels over a period of time. There's many privately-owned apartments in the state, and I would gather there's probably a few in this area that are privately-owned that have a Section 8 contract, which means that their income is guaranteed at a certain level. Our income is restricted, therefore we don't have the ability to borrow money at market rates to do this kind of project. The idea is that in order to keep rents affordable to people that live and work in the community, that you can't, these properties cannot carry the debt service that a market-rate property could. Therefore, that's where the state or federal government steps in to offer incentives in the form of tax credits or favorable terms on loans or grants to make the development of these type of properties possible.
The way I'm looking at that is, I guess, in a way, that is some sort of subsidy because it does offset what's being charged to try and maintain the property. Is that, I mean, without that money, they wouldn't be able to exist. So I mean, it has to be looked at some sort of ways of subsidy, correct?
It's an, it would be an indirect subsidy by virtue of a grant from HUD that goes to the state. The state decides where it goes. By virtue of that, you know, by virtue of that money, that's either zero-interest loan, deferred 30 years, that enables us to run a property cash flow positive, pay reserves, maintain reserves, maintain it while being, while having to deal with a rent ceiling.
Mr. Chairperson?
It's an indirect subsidy.
Mike?
Just to go back to what John and Justin were just asking, there's two pieces here that I just want to make sure are clarified as well. My understanding, through receiving community development block grants through the state, they are identified as loans, however, they are treated as grants. And it is standard practice, both in this state and many other states, that they are continually deferred for multiple years and sometimes indefinitely. So even though we are looking at this as, and we're talking about it as a loan, I think we would be setting a precedent if we decided that we would eventually be receiving these funds back at some point. For most housing projects, the projects are continually deferred. And so in what Matt's mentioning is that they would ask for a deferment of 30 years. At that 30 years, it is likely they'd come back and ask for a deferment for another 30 years. And really, the point of calling it a loan simply allows the community and the town to have equity in the project. So if at any point the project decides that it's no longer, we decide it's no longer performing to a specific standard, that is when we're able to call the loan. And so I know we're talking about possibly, when would they be able to pay it back? And it's accumulating interest as we go along. But at the same time, the expectation is that this loan would be continually deferred and would only be called if and when a time came when the project or the property was no longer performing to a standard that we were comfortable with. Along those lines, as Justin's talking about financing, my understanding is the restrictions in terms of rent and income of tenants is simply because you receive the community development block grant. And if at a time when the block grants are no longer available, Housing Vermont and whomever would simply have to look for funding at an alternate source. And so while the overall project does not come with restrictions on it, simply by leveraging the funds of the community development block grant does the program then have restrictions on it. And so again, if those funds were to dry up, federal dollars were to dry up at some point, they would simply have to find another revenue stream to be able to fund redevelopment projects.
So just to be clear, if we were to defer this for one more year, you guys would seek out separate financing for new projects and to take on this loan currently?
Essentially, the one year allows them simply an opportunity of 10 months to do additional research and scoping for the project, at which time they'll come back to us again.
When they go for new financing, it comes through this Board?
If they're coming back, if they're talking about financing that we have control over, yes. So if they're talking about either looking for an additional community development block grant, or if they're looking to simply refinance the one they already have, it still has to come back through this Board at that time. So in 10 months or 12 months, you'll most likely see them right back here, filling you in and giving you an update on where they are at with the redevelopment project, and they'll probably have some type of solution or recommended solution that they would like the Board to consider. So yes, it will come back to this Board. Simply tonight, they're just looking.
If it didn't come back through us and they were getting money elsewhere, I would assume we could still call the loan, and they would, part of their loan, whatever financing they found, they would still utilize that loan to pay us back.
Yes, yeah.
And it's not really, paying us back is not, we didn't give them the money.
No, I understand.
Yeah, we're just administering a loan. Anything else? We have a motion on the floor?
We, I call a question. We have a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have, take a vote, all in favor? That is five against, one, and one recusal, correct?
One recusal, yes.
So the motion passes.
Thanks very much, and we'll continue to be in close contact with you and come back to discuss in further detail and work with the town staff.
Appreciate that. And thanks for the information.
You're welcome.
We got it up front. That was very helpful. Thank you. Okay, we're running a little behind now, so the 6:15 public hearing on the Shire's Housing Partnership Community Development Block Grant, this is a subject we had a few weeks ago. This is a subject we had a few weeks ago, and the agency to which the application was made asked to rehear it. So we are here for the second time. We are going to be asking for action tonight, allowing Shire's Housing to apply for a community block grant to help finance a proposed project on Silver Street. So we're going to bring John Broderick up from Shire's Housing to present to us. He has a little more information now, a month down the line, so we'll let him make the presentation. I'll bring several members of the town staff up so we can ask questions of them, and then the public here. I'm going to ask people to come up to the microphone to my right so that we can keep the staff up here and answer any questions they have. John?
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the Board, and thanks for everyone coming today. First thing I'd like to say is I apologize to the Select Board for coming before you and expecting, asking for action on the same night as you first heard about this development. In the past, where the substance of housing projects is discussed is really with the Development Review Board, and that is still ahead of us. If we're successful here tonight, if we're successful getting funding, we will go before the Development Review Board to really talk through the details of the project. But I'm happy to do that tonight as well. We've been open about talking about what we're planning here, but you have my apology for having a rush through last time. I appreciate you giving us the time again to take up this matter. So the past four weeks, there's been a lot of conversations about this development, and I think the fact that the room is full tonight and the fact that this has been a big topic of conversations around dinner tables and restaurants and water coolers all over town shows that, you know, just what kind of town this is. You're going to hear tonight from people who are vehemently opposed to this, people who have concerns, people who are supporters, and people who are going to ask, "Why aren't we doing more of this? And why aren't we building more of this kind of thing?" But I think that what this all shows is that there's a great diversity in town, and that everybody loves Bennington, and everybody loves living here, and, you know, we can all get along despite having differences of opinions about things like this. So before I get into talking about the actual development, once again, we have asked the Town's permission to apply for a community development block grant to help support the creation of this development, what we're calling Monument View Apartments, 24 apartments at the site of the Apple Ridge condominium association. I'd like to thank the staff members from Shire's Housing who are here tonight. Not going to ask everyone to come out, but I will give a quick shout-out to Pat Warner, who's a Bennington resident who's been here her whole life. She is the one who checks our applications. So she's the one who is our lease-up specialist, making sure that we do criminal background checks, credit checks, prior landlord references. Fred Gilbar is either in the room, maybe not, but he's on his way. He's a retired police officer. He works for us part-time, making sure that everything is cool, and all the people who we think are living there are actually living there. I want to thank the members of the Shire's Housing Board. I see a few of our Board members. We're a nonprofit organization run by a Board of Directors of local people, some people from Manchester and Arlington as well, but mostly Bennington people. I would also like to thank a special friend of ours, Stephanie Calabro, who lives right next door to our development on North Branch Street. And I ran into her at an event a couple of weeks ago and asked her, "You know, you live next door to our, you lived through a year of construction, and then you've lived through a year and a half of having all these new neighbors where there used to be a vacant lot. What do you think?" Hopefully, she'll come up afterward and tell you what she thinks because she's still a supporter of the organization and really doesn't mind living next to our development on North Branch Street. Stephanie, I just talked about you.
I know. I know. I've been here.
Shire's Housing has been in this business for more than 20 years in Bennington County. We provide quality housing that's affordable to working families and seniors on fixed income. We primarily use the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program for the work that we do. The Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program was signed into law by President Ronald Reagan in 1986 as part of a tax reform act that year, and it targets people at 60% of median and below. Median income is the, you know, $63,900 for our county right now. So this targets workforce housing. It targets people who are making less than about $35,000 or $36,000, but also who have enough rent to pay an affordable rent without going over 35% of their income. Shire's Housing has taken on many distressed properties over the years. That really has been our primary business, taking over properties that were abandoned, that were vacant, that were completely rundown, and we've restored them to viability using Low Income Housing Tax Credits and other programs. Our organization is very much like a small business. We spend $2 million a year just on the local economy, not counting any new developments that we do. Just through the regular course of business of operating 232 rental units in the county, 135 of which are in Bennington, we use local vendors. We use local vendors, we have staff who live here, pay taxes here, buy groceries here. The primary business of ours has been rehabilitation of deteriorated housing. As you can see from this pie chart, we have 116 units that are in buildings that have been rehabilitated, and only 18 that are new. The first time we did new construction was the four units next to Friendly's as part of the downtown Crossing development, and then, that was only in 2008. And then in 2012, we did 14 units of new construction at the North Branch Street site. We're currently preparing a development of 26 units of, of historic rehabilitation and 29 units in seven buildings where we hope to do significant energy improvements. So even though we're doing new construction now, and we're talking about new construction, rehab is still our primary business, it's still the majority of what we do, it still takes up most of our time. As you can imagine, rehabbing old buildings is expensive, and sometimes new construction can be actually cheaper, and over the long haul, it's very much less expensive to, to build new. This is an example of, of what's coming up. This is Carrigan Lane on top, 119 Pleasant Street, 233 School Street, those are buildings that we'll be doing hopefully in 2015. Corby Whitney, as you know, we have people who went to school in this building, but it was vacant for a few years, and it really wasn't going to, it was very, very likely to not get done by a private investor. It just wasn't really going to work. We were able to secure financing, bring that money here, put local contractors to work to build 22 units of senior housing, which have been occupied for now, for almost 15 As part of the roaring branch development that we completed in 2012, we did 12 units on Benmont Avenue that were built in, in the 1860s. We had owned those buildings prior, but when we first took them over, they weren't fully, fully renovated, at least especially to today's energy standards. So we were able to go back in to those 12 units and do a really nice restoration at the same time that we did the 14 units on North Branch Street, which was on a vacant lot, underutilized lot that's on town water and on town sewer. So that was a kind of a, a perfect combination, half rehabilitation and half new construction. So Hawks Woods, you know, I was not around, I, I moved here in, in 2005, so I never really got to experience walking my dog through Hawks Woods. This is in the back of Dave Frederickson's house, and it didn't want me to really put it up there, this little headstone. But, you know, Jack Appelman came in in 2006, submitted applications for permits, got permits to build 40 condominiums, clear-cut the, the land, which I know is a very sore subject for folks who live up in that neighborhood. And I think it's safe to say that if, if it was us, if it was Shire's Housing now, I don't think we would go in and clear-cut a lot in the middle of town like that to, to do, to do this. But it's done. By late 2013, nine of the condominiums were sold, three have remained unsold but are rented, and I understand four of the 12 units are currently rented. At the time that they did the clear-cutting of all the trees, they also put infrastructure in the ground. The permits for 28 additional units are still in place. What we're proposing is, we've signed a contract to do 24 rentals. With Housing Vermont as our co-developer, which is very common, Housing Vermont works with groups all around the state, and brings a lot of technical expertise to, to construction and development. What we're planning is 10 units will be in duplex buildings along the Silver Street side of the lot, and then two small apartment buildings, one with six units, one with eight. The six-unit buildings currently, as we have it conceived, the six-unit building has one bedrooms, the eight-unit building has six two-bedrooms and two three-bedroom apartments. So the current plan reduces the number of apartments, reduces the number of buildings, reduces the amount of concrete necessary for the site, and thereby increases the green space. As I said before, I just skipped on me on my thing, but I don't know how to get back there now. But Pat Warner is the one who does our credit checks, criminal background checks, and prior landlord references. Section 8, if someone has a portable Section 8 voucher that they can bring around to various landlords, we will accept it just as other landlords mostly do. There's no project-based Section 8, which means there's no Section 8 that's attached to any of the apartments. The only form of Section 8 that we would, that we're, we're accepting for, for this development is if someone already has a Section 8 voucher that they can take around and move around. If someone does have a Section 8 voucher, they still have to get through our credit check, they still have to get through our criminal background check, they still have to have an acceptable prior landlord reference. So we very much have a lot of control over who ends up living in our apartments, and we take great pride to make sure that the people who live in our apartments are deserving and that, that follow the, the rules and standards that we've set forth. As far as income ranges go, as you've heard, 60% of median is the target, is the maximum income for the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. So as you'll see, the, the numbers that are in red there are maximum incomes. One person, 26,940, all the way up to, for a family of four, 38,460. Below that is very approximate minimum income necessary to rent. The average one-bedroom at $700, you'd need to earn $24,000 a year and show us where that is coming from in order for us to rent an apartment to you. Same thing with a two-bedroom, you'd need 25,714. So the exact income range is a bit of a moving target, depending on exactly what the rent is, and depending on these, the restriction in that particular unit. Most of these units will be 60% of median income, there'll be a couple that'll be between 80 and 100, because we always blend in a few market rate units wherever we can. So property taxes, I know is an issue, you know, you're going to hear tonight from, from, from property owners of rental property who are struggling long out there in a tough economy, in a really tough business, and they think that it's unfair that we either don't pay property taxes or don't pay our full share. So there was an analysis done by, by John Antoni, thank you, John. 14 of our, well, actually, Act 68 is the law in Vermont that governs property taxes and how they work. Organizations and for-profit companies that have restricted rents are eligible for up to 10% reduction in the assessed value, provided that you can document it, provided you can show on an income and expense basis that it's, it's justified. So the reduced amount is only for the educational portion, not the municipal portion of the taxes. So we have 14 buildings that have rent restrictions in Bennington. The total sum of the assessed value for all those properties is the 4.5 million assessed value there. Because of the Act 68 reduction that we're allowed, that would total 394,000 for a total assessed value of about 4.1 million. So if we were, if we were, if there was no Act 68 exemption for us, the full market tax liability would be 115,468,24. The actual taxes that we paid last year was 109,000, so our reduction was about $6,200, which is really only a five-point, you know, less than 6% reduction. I think our organization brings a tremendous value to the town, and actually, if that's the amount of the reduction, I think it's, it's not really all that substantial, given the other things that we do. Before I forget, speaking of other things that we do, John Carpenter came here today. So John Carpenter, I don't know if anyone knows him, I think he's actually a fairly popular guy in town, is a developer at Chester Knoll and Jennings Brook. Just in this difficult economy, built six new condominium units to add to the Jennings Brook development, and they're absolutely beautiful. I suggest you take that ride on Elm Street and go down and have a look at those units. We've, we've submitted applications for two homeownership tax credit grants to help John to sell those units to people who are a little bit less than the income necessary that you would need to buy it without any subsidy. So there may be 35 or 40,000 grants that would go to write down, help with down payment and closing costs, which is usually the primary barrier for folks like that. And we're hoping to make an announcement in a few weeks about, about that for, for John's units. So thank you for coming, John, and thanks for, for building out there. So sorry about my presentation disappearing. Trying to get back to where I was. Also want to thank, if they're not in the room, Nick Hathaway and Dave Hayden, because they were the primary contractors on our roaring branch project. As you know, we, there was a four and a half million dollar construction contract when we did the roaring branch apartments on Benmont and on North Branch Street. And even though there was no general contractor from Bennington that bid on the full job, because it was a pretty big job and no company was large enough, most of that work went to local subcontractors, the largest of the two being, being the plumbing and heating contract with Hayden, and the electrical contract with, with Nick Hathaway. So we're really happy that we have, and a, a good list of subcontractors here that can work on jobs like this. We do see our mission as, in part, economic development. There's resources out there, the community development block grants, the low-income housing tax credits, and other sources of funds that we, that we pull in for these sorts of developments. It's a competitive process, and there's applications in from Burlington, there's applications in from Brattleboro, Barry, Montpelier, all over the state. So when we put together a development like this, we have to put, put a good application together, a quality application that's going to compete with other applications that are going in from all over the state. Okay. Got that too. Property taxes. Vacancy rates. So, you know, why, why build this if there's a lot of vacancies? And why build this sort of a thing if, if we're not projecting huge amounts of, of population growth into the future? We commissioned a market study, it's, it's required that we, we do a market study, and it has to be from an independent specialist in market studies that has an arm's length from us, who's on an approved list from Vermont Housing Finance Agency. And he found last year that there was a 2% vacancy rate among rentals, 1.8 to 2.2, but roughly a 2% vacancy rate. Any expert in real estate will tell you that a healthy market has a 5% vacancy rate, because there's just movement, there has to be sort of movement. And, and the homeownership vacancy rate is 3%. The, generally, you know, what is a, in a healthy market, it's a 3% vacancy rate, but in a rental, it's two, it's, it's 5%. So if there's a 2% vacancy rate, and this was a year ago, so maybe it's changed a little bit, or maybe we're having a blip, if there's a lot of rentals on the market, we're not seeing that. We're not seeing tons of rentals on Craigslist or listed for rent in the newspaper. So I, I think it's fair to say that we're in a tight market, we're in a tight rental market. So bringing on new units now, or, or for next year, you know, fits very well. And even though the overall population in the next year, in the next five years is projected to remain about the same, what we found in the market study was that the age group between 25 and 34 years of age is expected to increase fairly dramatically. And as we know, this is, this is much more of a typical renter population. The first home buyer market, the first home, the average age of the first time home buyer is increasing, because over the past five years, after the tightening of the credit markets, it's just much more difficult to get into that first house. So we think that this fits in rather perfectly into what is, is needed in town. Adjacent property values. I've gotten communication from some homeowners in the adjacent neighborhood, up beyond Silver, up on Silver Street and up to Prospect, and even as far as Crescent View, concerned about a variety of things, and you'll hear from them tonight, because they'll, they'll speak tonight, but property values is one of the, the concerns. There've been a lot of studies done around the country, and I didn't come with a whole packet of them, but in the, in the yellow handout that I've passed out tonight, there's a link to, to a summary that summarizes a lot of the, the data on this. It's really hard to, to judge unless you do, unless someone goes out and really does a study and measures the impact of affordable housing developments on surrounding property values. I'm happy to say that it's very little impact, and almost never has there been a, a depressing impact on adjacent property values. Stays the same or increases. And I invite you to look that up, I invite you to, you know, to, to poke around, and I'm interested in hearing that, and I'm also interested in watching what happens here. I have not heard about plummeting of property values on North Branch Street, or on Benmont Avenue, or anyplace else, and I don't think it's going to happen here. I am willing to stay in contact with any homeowners that have concerns up in that neighborhood about what's, you know, about what could happen up there. So what happens next? If the select board approves this tonight and we can move forward, then the Community Development Board will decide on June 11th about allocations for this year. And it's heavy competition, as I've said, as you might imagine, for community development block grant funds, because this is an important part of most of the housing developments that take place in Vermont. After that, the Vermont Housing and Community, I'm sorry, the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board meets the next day on June 12th. We also have an application that's already been submitted to BHCB. If we're successful with both of those places in securing funding, then in July, we'll submit applications to, for the Development Review Board to amend the existing permit. So there's already permitted place, anybody can buy that lot and go and build the duplexes as was originally laid out. We're asking for approval to change the site layout, reduce the density, and to, to change the site plan in the way that I described earlier, with the five duplexes and two small apartment buildings. Now, I met with condo, condominium owners, the, the condominium owners board last week, and I expressed to them that it is in our best interest to work with them to find an agreement around use of the road, shared parking, shared plowing of snow, lawn removal, trash removal, and to really win over their support to what our site plan looks like and, and how things go. And I'm hoping that those negotiations continue, and I'm hoping that before we're ready to submit our application to the DRB for approval, that we have, you know, come to some agreement with the, the condominium owners there. Development Review Board will hopefully consider the application for amendment in July or August. If we're successful, we'll hopefully bid the development out in, in September, have a construction loan closing in October or early November, and start construction in Thank you very much, folks. I think we're going into question answers now, and I'm sure there are going to be plenty. And again, thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, John. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask Dan Monks and John Antoni to come up, as well as John Broderick, to stay here, have the board pose any questions to them, because I've gotten a lot of questions over the last two weeks about tax issues and zoning issues and things. The property has a history, so these gentlemen will have a lot of those answers, and hopefully we can keep things moving. We'll, we'll start with the select board, and then we'll go to any questions from the citizens who come up to this microphone here. And again, speak clearly for the room, because the microphones are just picking it up for the television audience and recording. So I'll start at this end. John, do you have any questions for Mr. Broderick, or either of the other two, John?
I guess I have a question for anybody else on the board. Was anybody else presented with the, a packet of information from what we were just presented?
We, I haven't seen that presentation yet, no, no. That was...
I guess my questions, I would like to dive into that and look into the details a little more. I mean, we started off the conversation by, you know, apologizing for not giving information to us sooner, and I have nothing to look at right now.
Well, we have, what's the date you need the decision by, John? You need a June 11th hearing?
June 11th is when, I mean, we need action tonight to move forward with the June 11th date, because that's when, you know, that's when the funding is decided.
Okay.
So again, we're put in a position where we didn't see any of this until tonight, and now we have to act on it again.
Well, I think we've, we've seen some of that information. I've certainly, we've had four weeks to gather it on our own as well, to look in. I've certainly, we've had four weeks to gather it on our own as well and look into it with the questions we had. And so, I mean, I'm not feeling like this is a new topic or that we haven't had the opportunity to look into these. I mean, I've spoken to John several times about, you know, these points as well. So, you know, I think in this situation, it's not a new topic. We've got more information than we had at the first hearing, which is, I'm more comfortable with. But that's where we stand right now. We have, we do have a meeting next week, but that's going to be too late for you as well.
Yes.
Put this through. Okay.
I mean, my question will be where all the facts and numbers came from. I know there was a lot of names that were left out and omitted, and that's where my fact-checking would come in. So, when we're talking about a 2% vacancy rate, where does that number come in?
That was from a market study a year ago, right?
Let's have the...
Yeah, Mr. Broderick, enter.
Right.
So, who was that?
It's from an independent market study commissioned by us and Housing Vermont, and the person who did it was Doug Kennedy, Doug Kennedy Advisors, who is a recognized vendor who does market studies all around the region.
I mean, for me, those are the type of numbers. They would continue. There's a long list, but I would have to go through it myself, like you said, in the last couple of weeks, or however much time we were given to research it. So, my questions are going to be limited tonight.
Okay. Justin?
One of the things that sticks out to me is I think I would have a lot easier time getting behind redevelopment of some existed blighted properties. Why get away from that in these last two major projects folks have done and get into brand-new construction?
Well, as I said in my presentation, rehabilitation of historic buildings has been our primary business and will continue to be our primary business. As you know, the old buildings are pretty tough to manage because they're not energy-efficient. And so, new construction is almost the same price to build new as to rehab old, and it's a lot more energy-efficient moving forward. The people who make the funding decisions in Vermont about low-income housing tax credits and CDBG and the other sources that we use, they look for the most competitive projects possible. And we felt that by adding in some new construction, we were able to balance things out a bit and make our application more competitive in the statewide competition.
You talked a little bit about 2% rental...
Vacancy. Vacancy rate.
Vacancy rate, thank you. And ideally having to be a 5%. How far do you plan on going with new construction with redevelopment of existing properties beyond this project? And what's the ideal situation in driving up the vacancy rate in rental properties?
So, the first question is, do we plan on doing new, more new construction after this?
Correct. And if that is the case, I assume that you seem to be attempting to drive up the vacancy rate by getting it from a 2% to 5%. What's, why is that ideal to have a higher vacancy rate in properties?
Because in a tight market, it is, it doesn't favor the buyer, the renter. And in a healthy market, I think that, you know, there's a flow in rentals. There's a sort of a natural movement in rentals. You know, people move to buy houses. People move, you know, for a variety of reasons. And I'll leave it to the experts to say that, you know, 5% is the healthy amount for rental vacancies. I think that's fairly established. I don't think, that's not my term. And I think when we're that low, when we're 2%, we're pretty far from what is the optimal healthy situation for a rental market. As far as other types of new construction, I'll tell you what we have on the docket. Twenty-six units of rehabilitation at Carrigan Lane, 119 Pleasant Street, 233 School Street. We have a collection of seven other buildings where we hope to do energy-related improvements in the next year. We have $5,000 worth of architectural plans for the old middle school that we looked at very closely and ran a lot of numbers on and couldn't really find a way to make it, or have not yet found a way to make that work. In terms of new construction, we have joined with the Economic Development Forces in town to look for a way to do something with the Tuttle Hardware Store lot on Depot Street. And if we were to do something there, we would like to see ground floor commercial with newly constructed units upstairs. Beyond that, I can't say that we are looking at new construction. We have a portfolio of buildings that are still aging, and we're looking forward to making sure that we're doing our job to maintain those.
Questions for John Antoni. John, these, the tax benefits that Shire's enjoys, are they available to any property owner or commercial, do they have to be commercial property owners?
The Act 68 restrictions are to coveted, affordable, or not affordable housing, but ones that are under a housing subsidy or a limit to the rent property. So, again, a typical private owner would not be eligible for an Act 68 exemption.
Okay. And to qualify for the Act 68 exemption, they would have to release the amount of income that they get through rentals?
Well, there's, I think there's a number of criteria that need to be met, and I'm not familiar with all of them. I'm saying John can speak better to what folks need to do.
I think what Jim is asking is if a rental property owner were to come to you and say, reduce my taxes because the building is not flowing, the cash, it's not cash flowing, how would you value, evaluate that?
Well, I'm saying an owner each and every year has the right to grieve his assessment. So, every, every May, as a matter of fact, this week, you know, we'll be starting our process. So, any owner that feels that their assessment is not, either not in line with comparable properties or not at a market level, can say, send us a letter and we'll take action on it. Whether it gets changed or not, that's a separate story, but again, it'll be in the process.
So, in short, if the property owners met the same criteria that John meets, they would get that same 10% off, the education part of their tax bill?
Again, if in fact their apartments are either rent-regulated, income-regulated, household income-regulated, again, there's whether there's a subsidy covenant on their property, or again, some governmental restriction, then yes, they'd be eligible. Without those two things, they would not.
So, a private owner would have to actually have a lower-valued house. You'd have to argue that during the assessment process. So, let's say my house was originally assessed at 140. I have to argue that these are the rents that I'm getting, this is the challenges that I'm facing. If I wanted to sell it, it's actually only worth 105. They would have to say the value of the house was less, but you'd still get taxed at the same rate as you were before, just at a lower level on top.
Second question that I had for you. With the completion of this new construction, John, do you have an estimated amount of what would be going into property taxes?
Well, if John and I had talked about this earlier, at this point, we don't because, again, John's organization gets assessed on an income and expense, on an income approach with certain criteria. But if we say the 14 units out on, off North Branch Street, the Roaring Branch project, there were 14 projects for 14 apartments, and they're assessed currently at about 38,000 a unit. So, if we take the $38,000 a unit as a base, by the 24 proposed apartments, I think we're at about $925,000 for the assessed value of the completed project. At, and then at 2.5% or whatever the tax rate would be, you know, there would be the, you know, the tax amount. Again, and I'm not sure whether there'd be Act 68 exemptions there, but the assessment would be 925,000 by the full downtown rate, so 2.5%. Or again, I mean, who knows what it's going to be for down the road, but at this point, about 2.5%.
So, what would the figure be?
He could do it in his head. Come on.
Sharon, do you have anything for...
Not right now.
Michael?
Yeah, just an off-the-wall question. What type of financial risk or financial exposure could devolve on Bennington if this is, if this goes ahead? Any financial risks or exposures that would impact the town?
I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't hear the whole question.
I'm very, I'm going to try it again. My voice is going. What, if any, financial risks or exposures would devolve to Bennington if this project were to move ahead?
To the town government or...
Town, period.
You mean, where could it go off the rails?
You bet.
You know, if we started construction and didn't have all the money to finish it, that would be a bad thing. There's no chance of that happening. If we were to build the project, lease it up, and then there would be some catastrophic thing in our organization, I don't think that's happening. We have a fairly stable organization that's been around a long time, that's on solid financial footing. So, I can't think of a sort of doomsday scenario where...
And take the, take the backside of that question, that what financial or other tangible benefits might there be of this project going forward?
Adding 24, $25,000 to the tax rolls, 24 new households that are walking distance from South Street Cafe and Romantos and Madison Brewing and Friendly's, and a place for folks to live where they can pay a little bit less than they might be paying out there in the open market for good, quality housing that gives them the stability that they need to enter the workforce, to raise their young families, and to move on to homeownership. That's, those are some of the benefits.
Thank you. No more questions?
Tom's?
A couple. The, you didn't share any schematics or real design on your presentation. Is that really because it's still at a formulaic basis?
Well, let me just like walk like I'm at a boxing match down the road here. Sorry we didn't have this on the PowerPoint. This is Silver Street. These are the five duplexes. These are the two apartment buildings in the middle.
Okay.
And it is early. And this is, this, I don't want to preempt the Development Review Board.
The reason I'm asking that, John, is you're showing it, I did get a chance, I did some due diligence in this project.
Maybe if you could turn it around to the camera.
I looked at the Roaring Branch project. Do you expect that the project that we're talking about tonight will have some similarities in design as far as construction?
In terms of quality, it'll be very similar. In terms of the actual design, it'll, it'll probably be different because it's a different place. And we do want to make sure that what we're building fits into that site. We have a different architect for this development and, you know, but in terms of quality of materials, quality of construction, pretty much the same.
One of the reasons for my question is because the neighborhood, including the condominium neighborhood, how is that going to appear, you know, how's that going to impact the neighborhood? If I were living in that area and owned a home, I would be concerned about something that is not attractive, that might impact upon my enjoyment while I'm there, and also my resale value. I think you've touched on some of those things. But what is the plan? What is your discussion with the neighbors relative to that?
The housing that we build is affordable to working families, but it's not cheap. It's, you know, it's, you know, a good, healthy price for construction. We're paying, we're paying the private sector to come and build this for us. So, we pay, you know, full price, and we don't skimp on quality. I think our funders have learned over the years that you can build more units if you skimp on what you invest. And I think we've learned from some, some hard lessons from that. So, I think that, you know, the funders look very, very closely at our budget on both the construction side and the long-term operating side. And they want to make sure that what we're building is built to last, and it has an aesthetic quality that people can be proud of.
Just one possible final question. Relative to migration, I mean, that's what a lot of folks are concerned with that are in the real estate rental market. And I've also heard the flip side from not from those folks, although I did hear from those folks, that there's going to be a migration from folks out of town that is going, that are going to put a burden upon our, potentially our school system by continuing to add to new developments. And I don't know what the answer is, but where are the folks going to come from for these programs?
Our market study from 2013 projects that 10% to 15% of applicants will come from outside of the area. That pretty much jives with the applications that we received from the last development. And in terms of, in terms of increasing the numbers of people and children in school system, you know, I'm not a school funding expert, but at some point, when you're keeping buildings open the way that we are, a slight uptick in the number of students helps with state aid and helps to actually keep the economies of scale in those buildings, especially at the elementary level.
Dan, I have a question for you regarding the property and the status up there. Obviously, there's already been some approval process for that bill, that property. There's a rehabilitation going on on Silver Street sidewalks at this time. Is the infrastructure already in place once the sidewalks are in for the increased population up there? Is that, or is that something that needs to be addressed?
And that was the determination of the Development Review Board when the project was initially approved. There are full sidewalks all the way into downtown from both Silver Street and South Street, although currently Silver Street's being rehabilitated, so it'll be even better sidewalk. All the water and sewer is in, all the water and sewer allocations have been granted. Telecom and electricity, all the infrastructure is there for more units than I understand John is proposing at this time. So, 28 units with many more. I think most of them are three bedrooms, and I don't think, John, you're only, you're doing one, two, and a couple of three bedrooms, correct?
Right.
Now, the 2% housing, in my recollection, a 2% housing vacancy constitutes a housing emergency in some cities' definitions. Is that, do we consider it that urgent, or is it not considered a housing emergency at 2%? Not something tossed around?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to toss that out.
Okay. That's fine. That's why, I was curious if that was a conversation.
I mean, people who are looking for apartments and can't find apartments they can afford, they would consider it a housing emergency. I'm not going to, I'm not, you know...
The Economic Development Partners, of course, have a whole segment on housing, and as I, you know, as I understand it, this is, the workforce housing is a targeted need for employers in the area, for people starting their career to be able to find affordable and decent housing that, you know, to continue staying in Bennington and pursuing their career. Do you tie directly into that figuring when you, when you target your projects, or is that an independent?
Into the, I'm sorry, tying into the...
To the economic development studies that we've done and the actual demands?
Absolutely. I'm the steering committee for the housing study that's being done. And, you know, this, what we're proposing in the town plan that this board has approved, I think there are 10 points, last time I checked, under the housing category, and I think we hit six of those. It's infill housing in a residential area that doesn't require a zoning variance. It's on the town water, it's on town sewer. It's consistent with town plan, it's consistent with the regional plan done by BRCRC, it's consistent with the state's priorities to prevent and reduce sprawl of residential communities. So, and then in terms of economic development, yeah, 24 new families walking distance from the downtown, I think will be very helpful. If you look at the jobs that are being created right now in town, it's definitely, this hits that income group. And I should add, when I say it hits that income group, someone moves in and their income qualified, and their income goes up, they don't have to move. It just, we have, we do monitor incomes as they go, but people don't have to move because their income goes beyond this.
I had one more question for John Broderick. With respect to this project, when it comes to materials, you buy locally?
We do. RK Miles from Manchester sold us a lot of doors and windows for Benmont and North Branch Street. Greenberg sold us a lot of stuff. Curtis Lumber sold us the prefabricated panels. I know they're across the border, but they are in our economy. Bennington House Tile sold us all the materials for the flooring, and local people did the installations.
How about appliances?
Appliances did not come locally, Jim, and we tried. I went to our local person and asked them specifically to put in a bid, and it didn't work out. We had, we, they were underbid by a large supplier. You got me on that one.
But you'll still make that up, you'll make that up for... But you'll still make that opportunity available with this project?
We absolutely do. We go out of our way to make sure, you know, we have federal procurement guidelines. We will choose one general contractor, and we will encourage that general contractor to use as many local subs and vendors. On North Branch Street, it worked out in many of the cases.
Stuart?
One of the questions that has come through the offices has to do with, well, how come we're encouraging the development of new housing units when we have water issues in the neighborhood higher, at a higher elevation than these folks? And I want to make it clear, this unit or these units will be serviced from the pressure zone that is served by the South Street water mains. The Crescent Boulevard area, the Meadowbrook Drive area, and the Jefferson Hyde area are served from a different pressure zone. The line that comes up of the Crescent Boulevard comes off of Morgan Street. So you've got different pressure zones within the community serving the two neighborhoods. So this will not have an impact on the houses higher up that are currently at a disadvantage for water pressure and fire protection that we are hoping to address through the bond issue. So there are two different pressure zones that serve these units.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'd like to open up to the public. Hearing part now. Yeah, I could ask people just, gentlemen here, if you can stand up. If you want to stand a few feet behind in a line, just to keep moving. If there's that many people who want to talk, that's fine. I'm going to ask you to speak clearly again for the whole room.
My name is Dave Fredrickson. I live on Silver Street. I'd ask the board not to approve this grant. I'm certainly not going to make a smoother presentation as Mr. Broderick, but I'd like you to consider the following reasons to not approve it. Number one, when that land was developed, it was going to be condominiums, and obviously, this is a whole different thing. So it's not what it started. Number two, when I read about it in the paper, Shire said they were going to bring new people into town. I'm told by talking to a couple of landlords that new people, when North Branch opened up, it wasn't new people, it was some of their people that went to North Branch because it was cheaper. And of course, the landlords, because they're not subsidized, they don't have the same tax deal, they could not compete. Stu just answered number three about water pressure. I wondered if, with all those new units there, it was going to affect the people up the hill, but he touched that one. Number four, assuming of the twenty-four units, there's going to be some children in there, I have to differ with Mr. Broderick. I don't see any green space. The only place it looks to me like they can play is on the road or in the parking lot, or maybe my backyard. But I just don't see the green space. It's pretty much all, like I say, blacked up or a house. Number five, Mr. Broderick did come to my house, made a very nice presentation, told me all kind of things that sounded good to me, you know, he was going to take care of the fence. There'd be no barking dogs. There'd be hooded lights so they wouldn't be shining in my windows. Talked about how carefully he screened all of the people. As I say, it was a very smooth presentation, but when he told me that my property value was going to increase, he just lost a lot of credibility on that. I just could not believe that. But we did have a very pleasant visit. I'm told the folks in the condos did not have as pleasant a visit. Some of them felt kind of threatened with some of the services they were talking about. But for these reasons, I would ask you to consider not applying for the grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fredrickson.
Sir?
Good evening. Sorry, I'm a little short.
That's a big mic, big field mic that you own.
My name's John Hale. I'm a property owner, business operator in town. In the last two years, I've bought close to $2 million worth of property. We own fifty-three units right now. Our mission is to supply quality housing to not only low-income but to middle-class and working force in a variety of rent ranges. And we also do quite a bit of rehabilitation in town. We've bought seventeen buildings. Most of them were blighted, as John would say about the buildings that they bought. We have put quite a bit of money into them, turned them around. They're profitable. We compete with John's rate rents or rent rates at this point. But as one of the people from Applegate's organization said, prices are skyrocketing. It's difficult to compete at those lower rates, you know, with the taxes and the water going up. I actually grieved two properties in the last year, and they were decreased in almost $60,000 off the grant list due to the fact that the rents can't go up, but the cost of water, taxes, and all that does increase, which ends up going and being distributed to the rest of the taxpayers in town. You know, affordable housing units decrease property values. That's my philosophy. I supply affordable housing. There is old buildings in the town that can support that. I disagree with a new unit being built in town. I'm doing the Project Orchard Apartments where the Alexandria Inn is. We're building eleven units. We're spending $500,000 to do that. We're doing half of what Mr. Broderick's doing for ten percent of the price. So I disagree that it costs less to build new. We're doing energy-efficient boilers, hot water tanks, insulating. The roofs have been replaced recently, so they really don't need to be touched. But we're trying to do as much efficiency as we can and still make this property affordable for people to rent in the area. Obviously, the rents are going to be a little higher. This is based off of workforce, and we're really trying to attract new people. We're working with the employers. I just went to the B C I C meeting. It's getting harder to sell to them that I can actually make it profitable for them to invest their money in this business here. So again, I ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Fred Kennedy. I am president of the Apple Ridge Association. Looking forward to your next meeting so we can find out some more answers.
My name's Peter Cross. We've got quite a few apartments around Bennington area. One of the problems I find, Shire's housing has done a great job uplifting the different neighborhoods in town. But the last project that they had with the units over on North Branch, they took, all the residents over there came from existing apartments around town. I don't believe any new people moved here. And I'm afraid if he builds another neighborhood with another twenty-four units, all this is going to do is circumvent tenants out of existing buildings around downtown. And you're going to see the housing market go down even further than what it is because the rental market, the bottom's going to go out, and the landlords aren't going to be able to collect money. They aren't going to be able to rent their units and keep their buildings up. I went over some of the numbers on the taxes up there with John in the Lister's office, and I came up with a different number. I'd like to see some of those numbers. I thought that you got like an eight and a half percent discount across the board on all your property taxes, which means that all of us taxpayers have to make up that difference because they subtracted off your grant list, but they added on to hers. And I think that's an unfortunate way to do it, even though the state has okayed it. But I think that's something that needs to be changed. Again, I would urge that you vote no on this project.
John, the number that I understand also was five percent. Is that accurate?
Yeah, because again, it just comes off the education portion of the tax bill. So the municipal portion, if John's total assessments are $5 million, they're going to pay taxes to the municipality based on the $5 million assessment. On the municipal portion, there is the reduction. It's not strictly ten percent because some of John's buildings are apartments that are not...
Not qualified.
Qualified, so...
That's my understanding.
So again, so it's just off the education portion that, so again, so it could be five million times the municipal rate, four point six million or four point seven million on the education rate.
So he's not subsidizing any of the town tax?
No, the municipal end, we're...
He's paying a hundred percent on municipal.
Everybody's clear. It's similar to current use, is what it is. Is legislature creates and says, we have a need for X, in this case, qualified housing. So, and it's been a number of municipalities in Vermont where there are qualified housing units. So the education portion, the legislature says, this is how we're going to do it. It's spread out over all Vermonters. Again, the municipal end, we're made, well, I don't say made, good, but we're, again, so John's organization pays a hundred percent to the municipal.
The municipal tax, okay.
Susan?
Good evening. My name is Susan Strano, and I live in the neighborhood to which this property is being suggested to be developed. A couple of concerns that I have, I am in total agreement for affordable housing, but coming from where I came from, I like to see existing properties redeveloped versus new. I pass that property probably three times a day, going to and from different schools to take our children. And Silver Street, for one, is going to be a challenge with that many new units. It's difficult when you have two cars trying to pass on Silver Street, let alone having all this additional traffic coming on. Twenty-four units on that property, to me, is going to be a squeeze. I don't see much green space. I would consider fewer apartments, and I realize that you say that you have reduced it already. I think it needs to be reduced even more substantially. I don't know what the size of the lot was that North Branch was developed versus the size of this lot, and proportionately, what percentage of brick and mortar is going up on each. But if you want to give people who can afford to live in affordable housing a decent lifestyle, as everybody is professing to do, I think that green space is essential because there is no green space elsewhere. And the children cannot go out and play on Silver Street. It's way too busy. So I would urge you to reconsider in reducing the number of units substantially on that property. Either vote no totally tonight, or have you come back with a discussion on fewer units. Also, the access, perhaps not going onto Silver Street. If you ever were up that way and you tried to make a right off of Norton onto Silver, and there's another car coming up Silver, you know you can't do it. If there's another car coming down Silver, you know you can't do it. And that's just for the people who already live in the neighborhood. So I urge you to reconsider, for you to reconsider, Mr. Broderick, the proposal, and for the board, at this point, to deny it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dennis Hart, and I'd like to ask a question. On your yellow paper, you said you had twenty-four units, then you said you're going to have a six apartment and an eight apartment, and then ten duplexes. That comes to me like thirty-four or thirty-six apartments.
Sorry, ten units in five duplexes.
Okay, so that's ten on the paper.
Right.
Okay. My second question is, in that apartment house on Branch, it's a fact that most apartments have one child or two children. Some have none. So I figure there's twenty-eight children in that apartment building, apartment buildings. And if you put another twenty-four units in, that'll be another twenty-four children. That's over $500,000 in school taxes. I'd like to know who gets to pay that. Where does that filter into this project?
I don't think we're going to have forty-eight. I don't think they'll end up being twenty-four children there.
Probably more. You can look it up. It's facts on the internet. Usually, on an apartment house, there's usually at least one child per unit. Some have none, some have three.
Right.
That's $500,000 per year, not just one year, per year, to the town of Bennington taxpayers. I'd like to know where we're going to accumulate that money.
Yeah, again, I don't think we're talking about that many kids. We certainly don't have that many kids over on North Branch Street. We've reduced the number of bedrooms in the overall development. What's already permitted there are condominiums that could easily have children as well. We're reducing the number of buildings. We're reducing the number of apartments. We're reducing the number of bedrooms. And, you know, we just don't think it's all going to be families. That's why we're choosing to build six one-bedroom apartments, because we know that there are households out there that don't have children.
Does anybody go and check?
Does anybody go check what?
If there's, if it's a one-bedroom and they have children, they cannot be in there. You have to have two bedrooms.
Right. Do we check that?
Does anybody?
We check every one of our apartments to make sure that the people who...
At the start, right?
No, on an ongoing basis. We monitor occupancy on an ongoing basis. You can ask Fred Gilbar when you see him, because we pay him to, when we get a report of an unauthorized occupant living in a unit, we send the resident a letter asking them to clarify the situation. And if we find someone has sneaked someone in, then we, you know, we take action and act if we need to.
Even if that's true, the tax amount of money that we're going to receive for this building, these lots, isn't going to cover the school taxes. It's impossible. Thank you. I would appreciate a no vote.
Hi, I'm Jeanne McKenna. I'm a resident up in that neighborhood. And some of the things that I'm concerned about, people have already talked about. One of it is the increased traffic. And although Silver Street to Norton will have beautiful new sidewalks that will go right into town, we're a block over, so we're still in the street. So I guess if we make it safely to the sidewalk, we'll be good at that point. And that's the beauty of our neighborhood not having the sidewalks. I mean, we don't want sidewalks any further. There is a bus stop for the Bennington Elementary School, and the elementary school is at the corner of Prospect and Silver. There are no sidewalks. Right now, it's fine for them. They stand on the guy's property. In the winter, there's snowbanks. They're standing in the road. If anyone's gone through that intersection, they know cars sometimes stop, sometimes slow down. You know, it's one of those iffy things. As far as house values in the neighborhood, if they were building maybe condos and having it as it was, the condos that are down near the other end of the property, or if they built a couple of starter homes in there, I could see, yeah, maybe it would add to the value. To put apartment buildings in that neighborhood does not fit the neighborhood. The house that is right next to it just sold for $223,000. You can't tell me that that guy's property value was going to go up with twenty-four apartment buildings right next to him. I think if the buildings fit the neighborhood, we wouldn't have a concern about values. I do think, too, there's going to be a strain on the schools. That's Bennington Elementary, as far as I know, if there's younger kids. The older kids meet at Mag's Market. They have two buses full of kids that go to the middle school and high school already. The buses are full. You might be looking at increased buses that the schools, they're going to have to pay for to get these kids to where they need to be. And as far as decreased condos in there, that you're increasing the green space, Applejack has no money to do anything, so you're not increasing the green space. You're taking away from the green space. And I would like to see work with current landlords, empty buildings. That way, you're spreading the traffic around in the town. It's not centralized in one small area. And it does help the neighborhoods that they're doing. And I'm also a landlord. We have a duplex that we rent. It's only one. It was my great aunt's house. We didn't do it to become millionaires, and we haven't. I was not part of the survey. I don't know what landlords were. It's becoming increasingly harder for us to find good tenants. They have the ability with grants, with whatever, decrease in taxes. They do background checks. I don't have that ability. If they're taking the cream of the crop or the renters, what's it leaving us? We have good apartments. We renovated it. They're all, you know, up to code with the town. We worked with the town when we did it. I can't do two bedrooms at $750. I might as well put a for sale sign up. You know, our goal was to do nice apartments. You know, our goal was to do nice apartments at an affordable rate. You can't do it. So, I would urge you to, to vote no.
Hi, I'm Doris Lemire. I'm a landlord here in town. And my first question is, what's the new industry coming to town? Why would we need twenty-four more units? We have a lot of vacancies as well. Well, my second question is, on your board here, you put that you rent one bedrooms for, I think it said 500 and something. On this sheet that you gave the town, you rent a one-bedroom for $666, and a two-bedroom for $836. Which is accurate, the $750 for the two-bedroom? And I know you get a subsidy from the tenants. So, what is your amount that you rent your one and two and three bedrooms for?
Doris, I'm sorry, but every apartment is different, because we have different restrictions and different things.
Well, this is a sheet that you gave the town, and this is how you get your big discount on property taxes. So, what is it? I think our rents are actually lower than your rents. So, tell me what you get for a two-bedroom with heat, hot water, and garbage included?
Well, if you printed out the application there, then, then that is what I'll go with, because like I've said, the apartments are-
So, wasn't on the board, not the $750 on the board?
Doris, please, let him answer, please.
Yeah.
Thanks.
For presentation's sake, I picked the numbers that were sort of the average apartments, the average apartments for, for one and two bedrooms. So, if they're a little bit different in this particular development, I know that they are, but for illustration purposes, I wanted to show, I think some of the rents on the sheet that you're reading from are lower, and some are higher. So, our apartments are all not exactly this amount for a two-bedroom. They really vary, and that's in part because we have so many various restrictions that we have to live by.
Well, a lot of people seem to think in this town that regional affordable housing has lower rents than the private sector, and that's not true.
In some cases, we do, and in some cases, we do not.
Right. And that's why I'm wondering why you should get such a big tax break.
Well-
That's a state mandated tax break.
Yeah, I mean, that's what exists, but, yeah, but we understand.
Well, you're entitled to the same discount, Doris. You could get it too.
Oh, no, I'm not entitled to the same discount. You didn't understand him.
No, if-
No, we're not.
She would have to have rent-controlled properties.
We're not entitled to that.
Yeah. Alright.
I think that you should, people should vote no on it.
Thank you.
My name is David Skolnik, I'm a landlord, I own quite a few properties. First, I think that you must vote no on this. Mr. Broderick, I own South Street, my property backs directly on your property. You never interviewed me. Only way I found out about this was an article in the Bennington Banner, in which you pushed down, or crammed down, the vote, vote for your, whatever, your grant, and again, today, we have to do a quick vote, because there's another deadline. I'm amazed that, how you were able to push the deadline, always at the deadline. You didn't provide the information that was asked for, or was offered at the first meeting back in March. I found it very interesting that your tax rate is the same as my tax rate. But the interesting part is, your assessment is not the same as my assessment. Your assessment is based on income, and apparently, that is a big factor in grieving the value of your property. I'd like to know what the assessment of the Appleman property is now, and whether the taxes are paid in full right now, or they're in arrears. I'm wondering if the pound doesn't have an ulterior motive, that they don't want to do a tax settlement, wind up with a big hole in the ground. As to a couple of other comments from the Crosses, I agree 100%, your new project has taken tenants out of my projects. There's no way that I can compete with you. The only thing I can think of is when I drive into New Hampshire, and I go through Springfield, I say, I sure hope Bennington doesn't become like a Springfield, with a bunch of empty buildings and young people flocking from other areas because there's low rent here or subsidized rent. Why wouldn't you rehab existing buildings? Why are you putting new buildings in and bringing, forcing the vacancy rate higher, but there's nothing filling the pool? All you're going to do is put more room stock, or apartment stock out there, but no new people are coming in here. Tell me what new industry has come into this area? What are these 25 to 34-year-olds going to do for a living? So, therefore, I ask you to vote no on this.
Thank you.
My name is Lorna Sheridan, I also live in the area. I hadn't planned to speak tonight, so this isn't very well organized. But I, I think that the vacant lot there is an eyesore as it is. The woods that used to be there were something we enjoyed in the neighborhood. Appleman came in and clear-cutted, as you've stated, and left us with an eyesore. While I have been trying to find out, you know, is this project that the Shires proposed a good idea or not, I didn't come with a preconceived idea. I guess I'm really thinking that it's well-considered, well-thought-out, and adaptive, and attractive for the property, and I would urge the select board to approve it. I think that the studies have shown usually property values either stay level or go up a bit, and I think attractive housing in there would be a benefit to the community. I guess I, I also think that we naturally fear change, and this is a big change to our neighborhood, and the people who live close, and the landlords are all individuals who feel the change most drastically, I guess. But it sounds to me, from everything that I've heard, that this would be good for Bennington as a whole. So, that's why I'd urge the select board to, to approve it. And I guess I'm thinking, well, what if, like, in some instance, low-income neighborhoods, I gather, property values sometimes go down when affordable housing is brought in, especially if it's not of good quality. Well, that's not, this is not a low-income neighborhood, and it's supposed to be quality housing that's being, it is quality housing, from all appearances, that's being proposed. I wonder if there'd be a way to acknowledge the concerns. I mean, for instance, is there a way that property owners, if the value of their house does go down, could their taxes be lowered or something? And, so that they would, they would have kind of an insurance if they are willing to support this project. As for landlords, is there some way that the state or whatever organization can make it so that landlords who are in the private sector have what they need? I mean, is there something where they could have access to credit checks and so on, if they feel that they're at a disadvantage? So, I guess I would encourage us to think of the benefit to Bennington as a whole, and to put safeguards in effect for the individuals who will be most affected, but not to be afraid of change that might help our community.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin Callian, I'm homeowner on Apple Ridge. I'm going to make it personal. Sorry, Doris, you guys. We came back to Bennington to live in my hometown. Buy a condo, live with people like-minded, in a little community. We paid for a condo in a little community. Now, we have a little community and affordable housing. I'm not against the project, John, but I would like to see it be what it's supposed to be, a condominium complex, the way they are now. I look forward to talking with you more, but the way I understand the parking and the zoning laws, we're going to get screwed. Our little 12 units is going to really get hurt by this. Like I said, I'm making this personal, because I made an effort to come back to Bennington with my wife and live here, retire here, die here. And now, my little community of Apple Ridge is going to be a little community of Apple Ridge with these big apartment complexes alongside of us. I'm not saying vote against it, I just want to make sure we're taken care of in this, in this instance, because I think that we're the ones that are going to be hurt by this. We're the one most affected by this, and that's where I stand. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
My name's Jessica Quinn, and I just bought that property right next door, that she was talking about, that was just sold. I've lived there for less than four weeks, and I already have issues with the traffic on Silver Street. There are times I can't get in and out of my driveway to bring my children to school. That's a concern for me, and we do have five children in our household. It's a concern for me that if each one of these units were rented with just one person, that's 24 new neighbors right next door to my five children. And I understand that background checks and stuff are done, but it's still a concern as a parent to have so many new people in one small area, right next door to my children. Thank you. I suggest you vote no.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann St. John.
Stand back for now, that'll, it's very sensitive, so, thanks.
My name is Mary Ann St. John, I'm a resident here in Bennington, and I would like to urge you to vote in support of this, just because I think we've all seen the improvements to Benmont Ave, to North Branch Street, I think we know the track record of what was regional affordable housing, and now Shires Housing. They've done a wonderful job with the, both the renovations and with new construction. I think that they have excellent management skills, and have really maintained and kept track of their, their consumers and all of the units. I, I don't think that there really has been a demonstrated need for the number of units at that particular site. I think that's why Appleman was not able to sell all the additional condos, build and sell them, because there simply isn't the market demand for that kind of housing. I think there is market demand for the kind of housing that's being addressed here, and I, I, again, would just remind you to think about the quality of the renovations and the new projects that Shires has done thus far, and I don't think we could hope for anything better in a site such as that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of North Bennington, just moved there in October before I was a, a resident of Bennington. Just as a point of clarification, I wanted to ask you, you mentioned in your PowerPoint that the permits are already in place, that anyone else could come in and buy this property. Would they have to go through a public hearing to develop that property? Would they have to put as much thought into it as Shires Housing has in order to gain approval for whatever they wanted to put up, for the same number, actually, more units?
Michael, or Dan?
They have, it's a, it's a permit that is, has been granted and is valid to build additional 28 units on that property, so they would have no public hearing requirements whatsoever.
Condos, right? Not, we're not talking apartment buildings, we're talking condos.
It doesn't matter, we can't dictate homeownership, we can't dictate, you know, whether it's affordable or not, that's all constitutionally protected, but they are permitted to build 28 units there in the configuration that is proposed, whether it be condos or otherwise. Because there are changes proposed through the Shires project, they will have to come before the DRB and get an amended permit. Many of the issues that were discussed tonight, school issues, access issues, pedestrian issues, all those issues can be, if they're raised, revisited at the DRB hearings. So, it is, because it's amendment, all those things will be back on the table for the board to look at. All those issues were raised previously, and the board did find that there weren't any negative impacts, but it has been several years since that hearing, so it's conceivable that there would be different findings on some of those issues.
So, it sounds like there is the possibility that someone else could buy that property and put up however many units, whether they be condominiums or not, and not have to take public comments and, and go through all that. We haven't seen that happen yet, right now, it's an, an empty lot. Am I correct in saying that when you build on that lot, you will be paying more taxes than are paid on it now?
I think that's safe to say.
Yeah.
Even with your discount of, I mean, the, the number you quoted up there, about a $6,200 discount, didn't, didn't seem huge to me. I mean, it's, you know, even with this, this discount that we're hearing different rates, it, it sounds like you'd be paying more taxes than are being paid currently.
That's right. But our projection is $24,000.
Right.
That's, that could go up or down, but our projection is $24,000 per year in property taxes for that site.
I'll also say that I work for a social service agency in town, and part of my job as a family support worker is finding people housing when they're ready to move on, when they're looking at school districts and, and, you know, their children, because my clients have children generally. And it is hard to find a quality, livable apartment in Bennington. So, all of you landlords who said that you have vacancies, or that you have lost tenants to the, the complex on North Branch Street, please see me afterwards, I've got tenants for you. Thank you, I would urge you to vote and approve this project.
Thank you. Ms. McKenna, sure, sure.
Couple of things, I am not afraid of change. I don't think 24 units in there is going to work. If you've got to do less, do less. People say it's an ugly lot, it's amazing, if you plant a couple trees in there, a couple years, it's going to be beautiful again. There are available apartments in town, if you go on the banner, there's seven to 10, I think I saw the other day, one-bedroom apartments for 700 bucks, the same price that he's offering. Went on Craigslist today, found 10 to 15 apartments in there. Those you could look at, they look like decent apartments, they weren't disgusting. And if you go around town, you will see signs in people's yards saying apartment for rent. To advertise in the paper for an apartment is 80 bucks a week. So, if, you know, it's easier to put a sign in your yard to do that, but there are apartments out there. The apartment building that we have, it's a duplex, it's not our primary residence, we are taxed at the out-of-state rate. So, instead of getting a discount, we are paying a higher rate than if it was, if we were a resident. And that's, I assume, for all the landlords in town, we're paying a higher rate. And if they put these in, there are going to be more empty houses in town. There's going to be landlords that are not going to be able to pay their taxes, they can't find tenants. All it takes for us is one or two months of not having a tenant, and we're done for the year. If we break even, we're lucky, we don't make, I think last year we made a tiny bit of money, but that's about it. We do not put renovations in, we put money aside, because we don't know if we're going to get tenants. So, they want good apartments in town, but you can't take all the tenants and expect us to still put money into our apartments if we can't rent them.
Michael?
I'm not going to urge you to vote for it or against it.
Just identify yourself, please, Mike, in case someone is not, thank you.
I'm not urging you to vote for it or against it, that's what the people voted you on the board to do, but I think you're very close to upsetting the balance here in our town. Mrs. Broderick, you've done a great job with what you've done, your presentation was very nice on Washington, on TV at home. But let me go to the education part of this thing. If he rents it out to a place with, say you get 10, 15 kids, and you're not paying the educational tax, that doesn't get absorbed by every other, every other property taxpayer in Bennington. Not only that, if you have one or two special needs kids in a complex like yours or anybody's, you know what that costs in a school system today. So, I urge the board to consider the fact that you may be upsetting the balance of our town- our town if you keep doing this. We seem to become a nonprofit town, where the only businesses that are growing are nonprofit businesses, and, um, I think that's very detrimental for the future of Bennington. But you people all were voted in to do the right thing by the people, and you live with your decision, but, uh, I think Mr. Broderick's got other things he could be doing in town, like he mentioned the old middle school, the Tuttles property thing, I think would be a plus for the downtown, and instead of doing this, maybe the town would work with him to further one of the bigger things that the private sector just cannot do, especially in today's economy, that would enhance everything that he's talking about for Bennington. But, uh, you have to live with your vote. Good luck.
Thanks. Great.
Um, yeah. Just one clarification, a gentleman, uh, indicated that he, he was questioning whether or not the, uh, current development of Apple Ridge was current in its water and sewer and taxes, and according to my person here who works in the water, sewer, and tax department, we believe they are.
Okay.
Current.
Thank you.
So we have no...
I'm gonna close the public hearing portion, uh, we're gonna move on to comments. Uh, Mr. Broderick, do you have any closing statement for that before we ask you any further questions?
Just one point of clarification.
Okay.
If I represented that adjacent property values were, would certainly go up, if I made any sort of promise or representation about that, that was incorrect. I, I, what I've done is point to a study, that's a compilation of, of, uh, of actual research that's been done, that says it doesn't decrease generally. I cannot make such a promise, um, so I'm sorry if it came across that way.
Okay. I have a question for Dan Monks. Dan, uh, should this, and what we're voting on is whether or not we're going to be willing to administer a grant for Shire's Housing, should they be awarded the grant for this property? Um, if that were to happen, they were to, um, come up with the additional funding they need, which is significant among, amongst the, the, the grant, um, at the, at the review process down the line, um, is there room either in Mr. Broderick's process after getting a grant, or in the DRB, to change, say, the number of units, the traffic pattern, things like that, um, if parties are willing? Are you locked into anything if you approve the grant and then the DRB comes into a, a public hearing where they recommend changes?
I'll let Johnny answer that, the second part of that question, but the first part, as far as what the DRB's decision is, is it'll be based on the land use and development regulations and the evidence to the evidence of the hearing, and anything could happen from, you know, conditions on access or conditions on, uh, uh, new infrastructure, you know, and it could also be that if the evidence is overwhelming that the project is a negative impact on the neighborhood, it could be denied if there were no conditions that could mitigate that. Um, just full disclosure, because twenty-eight units were recently approved there, it's extremely unlikely that, that they would have a denial of the project, but there may be additional conditions that would address some of the concerns that were raised this evening regarding, um, school access, those sort of things.
Thank you. Mr. Broderick, do you have anything to add, uh?
Um, I think anyone who tries to develop that property is gonna find that, um, that they're driven toward putting as many units there as possible. I think if it was a private sector developer, they would really be trying to max out, and they'd be trying to increase the density, not decrease it. When we looked at the, at the numbers for this project, you know, we looked at the, looked at our own design and looked at the numbers and thought that twenty-four would work well. That said, um, you know, I, i- if this is a, if this is a vote to, to move forward tonight, I'm open to continued dialogue, that's, you know, that's the, the benefit of Shire's Housing. We're a local organization, we live here, we work right down the street, um, and I look forward to having an ongoing dialogue with, with folks who've expressed concerns tonight.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna open up to the board, um, start at this end this time. Tom, do you have any additional questions?
Um, no comment. Uh, you know, I've sat here and heard comments and concerns because I had the, pretty much the same concerns as many of you that, uh, spoke to us this evening. Um, I certainly recognize that adding twenty-four units, new rental units to the, uh, town is gonna impact, uh, upon our, our community. I, I wondered, you know, how the project is going to impact on the school system, uh, because, uh, particularly Bennington Elementary is going to be impacted with students there. To address my concerns, I, uh, done some, uh, work on my own. Uh, I've dri, driven through the recently completed Shire's project on North Branch Street, uh, and spent time on the ground at the existing site and viewed the surrounding neighborhoods, including the condominium project. I'll tell you, the, when the woods came down, the dye was cast, uh, and we're, we'd be fool-hearted, you expect the maples to grow back so that you have your woods back, which is damnable that it was done in the first place. I can tell you that I've also looked at, visited with the Lister's office and John Antonioni, um, and became educated on whether or not this not-for-profit organization is gonna have an undue tax advantage, and I can tell you that there is, and I recognize that the state provides a ten percent credit on the educational portion of the taxes, and that is spread across the state, it's not going to be affecting, impacting directly to Bennington. I did come across and come away with these impressions. If built at the level of quality that the North Branch Street project was constructed, the neighborhood, including the existing condominium units, is going to be enhanced, and that is going to be determined over a period of time and review by various commissions, the DRB being one. I also recognize if built, there's gonna be a migration from existing rental properties, which will have an impact on the rental community, especially those that have been marginally maintained in the past. Those of you landlords that have marginal properties are gonna be specifically impacted by this project. Those of you that have maintained your properties, I expect are gonna be less impacted. There is no evidence that there is gonna be an influx of folks from out of the town, out of the area, I expect that there's gonna be a movement within the area, and those students that are presently around town are gonna be presently in the system. So frankly, I would be in favor of moving forward with the recommendation that the grant application be processed.
Michael?
I've, I'm really split on this. I thought it was a good idea, listening to our fellow citizens who have their own set of objections, both people in the private sector who own and rent properties, and people like Mr. Hale who are renovating properties around town, deserve also a fair chance. And I, I agree with Tom, I don't know where the new tenants are going to come from, because there are no new people moving into town, the area is in outflux for the most part. Uh, I just don't know at this point where I'm gonna vote on this.
Karen?
Um, the only comment I have is, um, I live on Prospect Street, as many of you know, and lived through the Nathaniel Court build, um, and the blasting and the whole thing that went on there, um, and I didn't see my property value decrease at all from that. Um, I think John does quality projects, um, he's, you know, uh, North Branch Street is a beautiful project, and the rehabs that he's done, um, he rehabbed South Street right across the street from Prospect Street, and that is still, and that was a number of years ago, and that is still maintained to what it was renovated to, um, and it's a very good project. You don't see a lot of people out there, um, so I don't, I don't have a problem supporting this, um, that's, so I'm gonna vote yes.
James?
Yeah, I'd like to read something from the town plan, which is available to any citizen, and it speaks directly to, uh, what we're talking about tonight, and it, I think it's in paragraph five, "Bennington is an employment center for the region, and the people who work in town should be able to find housing in town. If an adequate supply of houses and apartments at a range of price levels is not present locally, people looking for housing will be forced to move to outlying areas and towns, resulting in inefficient residential sprawl. A shortage of diverse stock of local housing also discourages economic development because employers consider the availability of a local workforce and housing that workforce to be a critical factor in selecting locations for establishing or expanding a business." Now, the way I see this project, it's a four-and-a-half million dollar injection of money into our local economy, four-and-a-half million bucks, because it goes to local contractors. One of the things that I often get hammered on from individuals coming to see me at my cart is that we're not doing enough to grow the grand list. Well, here we are, and we're collecting more property taxes, so I'm gonna vote yes for this.
Justin?
I don't have any further comments about it, but this is my...
Okay. John?
Yeah, I'm just gonna reiterate a point that I made before when we were talking about, um, the, the tax revenue, Jim, I know you were a little confused on that as well, um, but the way that their assessment works is based on the revenue that's generated. So when you look at the apartment buildings that we have out there, I pulled the fifteen duplexes that we have avail, available, since that's the majority of what we're talking about here, and the average, uh, sale price, now it's not selling for that, but that's the, the selling price right now, um, was at a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, and then with that, I took some numbers from other landlords from myself and, and put together their, their spreadsheet. Now, if they were to buy that house at that, uh, value at current, uh, mortgage, or thirty-year fixed mortgage rates, it'd be four-point-one-two-five, I think is the going rate at some of the local banks. Um, their mortgage and, and interest, the principal and interest would be five-sixty-nine a month, um, their taxes for that house, I think our, our rate right now is around two-point-seven, so their taxes per month, again, would be three-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Uh, insurance, again, this is talking to other landlords, but it would be around a hundred dollars a month, twelve-hundred a year, could be a little less, um, depending on what they're working with. Water and sewer, I know that, uh, every quarter I see at least a three-hundred-dollar, uh, tab, so a hundred dollars is e, uh, easily, um, determined for the monthly rate. Heat, five to six hundred dollars, electric, a hundred dollars a unit, let's call it two-hundred dollars a month. Uh, trash, you have one bin, I think it's forty dollars a month, two bins, let's just say it's fifty dollars, even though we know it's probably more than that. Um, then you have miscellaneous charges, lawn care, plowing, uh, anything that breaks and has to be fixed, let's just call that a hundred dollars a month, I think other landlords would know that that would probably be more. Uh, after that's all brought up to your total, it's two thousand dollars and forty, oh, two-thousand forty-nine dollars, um, which is right on par with what our rents are, um, from Mullen Associates, that's why a two-bedroom goes for around nine-hundred dollars, uh, if everything's included, nine-hundred, nine-fifty, and a three-bedroom can go for around eleven-hundred. So, with that, you can see people buying these properties and breaking even, that's what the market has shown us, that's why it's landing at a hundred and forty-six on average. So when you take these different type of properties, it's assessed differently. So right now, the numbers that we pulled up, I believe HUD uses their own numbers, a one-bedroom is the six-sixty-six that was mentioned before, two-bedroom is eight-thirty-six, and a three-bedroom is ten-fifty-six. So let's assume that these are both two-bedroom apartments, I know some are three-bedrooms, some are one-bedrooms, but, but for the, um, for this practical purpose, since I was using...
John, slow down. Take a breath.
Slow down.
It's okay.
Since I was using two bed...
Trying to keep up.
Yeah, well... Okay.
You're good, thanks.
Um, since I was using two bedrooms before, we'll use two bedrooms again, so that's eight-thirty-six each, a total of seventeen-seventy-two. So, to come up with an assessed value, I took the mortgage and taxes out of that, which left, left us with, uh, eleven-fifty for the monthly expenditures, now you have to come up with an assessed value and taxes that add up to that seventeen-seventy-two. So, the taxes would end up, uh, being two-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars, and, because the assessed value would actually drop down to a hundred-and-one-five. So at a hundred-and-one-five, again, at a four-point-one-two-five interest rate with twenty percent down, your monthly payment would be three-ninety-four, and your taxes would be two-twenty-eight. That would drop you forty thousand dollars from what our average is right now. So obviously, there's a little bit of an unbiased market. Now, I'm forgetting one major factor here, the other thing that drops this down is the managerial costs, and that's not associated in here. So, one thing I asked for during this last week or two was the, the budgets that were put into these properties and the managerial costs that are associated with each unit, because every fifty dollars that has to go into this unit a month is gonna drop that assessment another ten thousand dollars. So, looking at those numbers, and I'd be happy to hand it out, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to give this to you earlier, um, but that's how it breaks down, and that's how the assessment works. So their assessment's actually at one-hundred-one-five, whereas in the private sector, it would be at one-forty. So you can, you can do the numbers, the two-point-seven, and you'll, you'll see where, actually, I have it right in front of me, it's a hundred dollars less a month, um, for each unit. So those numbers kinda speak for themselves, I think that as a board, we, we ask the people to come in here and voice their opinions. Uh, we had eleven people ask us as a board to vote no. We've had over a month and a half to allow people to come here, this has been, other than the debate over the panhandling, this has been, uh, a topic that's been more, most talked about, at least in my opinion, and people have had the right amount of time to come up and talk about this. So, with that being, uh, taken into consideration, I think the eleven to three that we saw should be taken into consideration with each of our votes. Um, one of the votes wasn't necessarily a yes, but it was, uh, uh, an upset feeling about an eyesore in town. So, I'm gonna vote no, and if we do vote no, I know that maples might not grow back, but two thousand and fifteen's coming up, and I think this would be a great project for Dan to look at in terms of rehabilitation of this eyesore that we now have. So, I don't have to go through all the other facts, the people have spoken, and so I'll let their, them do the talking.
Okay. Um, Michael?
I need to go back a little bit as I've been listening, and listened specifically to, to Jim Carroll, uh, and his quotation from the town plan, which I haven't read in a couple of months, but I read it fairly carefully. The town plan really is the strategy for who and what we wanna be and how we're gonna get there, and how we, how we bring in some money and bring in some work to get jobs in here at a four-point-five or five billion dollar level in terms of construction, that really does feel attractive to me. It may be shorter term, but it does feel attractive, and, uh, I now know which way I'm gonna vote.
Thank you. Well, I think it's, I mean, one of the, one of the issues I see here has a lot to do with, um, uh, we closed the public hearing, I'm afraid it...
Yeah.
I, I can't reopen it at this point, but thanks, is, um, a lot of the concern has to do with that neighborhood and what it's going to become, and I think, uh, I was no exception when Hawks Woods went down, as to being very disappointed and seeing that as, as, um, maybe a little premature. Uh, I was looking for a house at that time, I looked at that as a, as an idea, I didn't even look at, you know, the plans, I, I didn't think it was a good idea, um, I didn't know if it was gonna make it, and I thought it was a little overreaching, and I think we found that the developer got in a little over his head, uh, in, in that perspective, and that's a, that's a, that's a sore that still hurts in a lot of people, I'm sure, especially if you live right there. Uh, I certainly respect landlords being concerned of their market share, um, I come across subsidized competition from time to time, I don't always like it, uh, I tend to write it off as for the betterment of the community, a lot of times it's from an educational, uh, situation where they're, they're selling products for much more, much further below market than, than we could do to try and create a workforce. So you have to, you know, give a little, take a little. Uh, workforce housing is a big concern, I can tell you, um, as far as industry, manufacturing in this town is one of our strongholds, how, uh, healthcare is one of our strongholds, they are trying to attract people, and when you're trying to attract people in the just above entry-level wages, it is hard to fi, for them to find a place to, to move into, whether it's out of their parents' house from right here in Bennington, or coming in from another town. Uh, I think one of the things we, we lose sight of is a lot of times, these, when we talk about the, uh, lower-wage workforce, we're talking about our children, uh, moving on into their careers, and one of the biggest complaints I hear is that there's nothing for children to stay here for if they have ambitions and goals, and, and, uh, and that, that's a difficult thing. Uh, the, the size of a construction project, I think is, would be a very healthy thing for town. The school system, I, I'm, certainly don't wanna chase people out of our school system, uh, we receive more money than we pay right now from the state, um, having a declining population in the schools is not gonna help us with that, and it's not gonna help develop our education system. But most of, uh, my, my biggest concern right now is, is whether that neighborhood can in fact handle that, that growth, and I think that's really a discussion that we need to have, uh, if this, if this goes forward, because there's, I could certainly envision a smaller, uh, a smaller development up there if it were more appropriate, and when, as concepts become more, uh, more clear. So I tend to, to, uh, lean towards voting in favor of allowing John to pursue the grant, um, is that's really the extent of it, and I'd be hard-pressed to vote against it unless it was, I felt it was really a detriment for the entire community to have something like that there. Uh, this is just a first step, and there's a lot more to go, and I'm really, really happy people are involved and come, and I think this is what the DRB process needs, is to know what people in the neighborhood wanna see in that area. Um, the, as Tom said, that, you know, the dye's been cast with that property, unfortunately, the, uh, the woods are gone, and it's been zoned for development, and unless we, you know, see something different happen up there, uh, we could get a lot, we could get the twenty-eight units, we could get a lot less concern for the development of it, and, uh, so I would encourage people to stay engaged in that and see how it goes. And so I would encourage people to stay engaged in that and see how it goes. I'd entertain a motion if anyone so desires.
I'd so move that the application for the grant be supported by this board and moved along.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion?
Just like to say that four landlords spoke and seven residents spoke against this. So it wasn't, I just want to make sure that it's understood that it wasn't primarily landlords.
Yes.
Move the question.
We have a vote, and all in favor? That is five against. We have two against. The motion passes to allow the grant process to continue. We're going to take a five-minute recess, let people clear out, stretch a little bit.
Are we all done?
Thank you, everybody.
I thought for a few minutes I was just... Yeah, you know, I can't be overly persuaded by 11, 15 people coming. I mean, it's right, we're in the democratic process, I hear, but you know...
Okay, we're back on. Folks, we're... Folks, we're starting a meeting back up, so if we could take the conversations outside, please. Our next item is appointments to boards and commissions. Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's land donation, number eight. I've got so many notes on here. Land donation. Stuart, you gonna add that one?
Very briefly, 336 Main Street is this little small vacant lot located adjacent to Katie Cleaver's jewelry and Fiddleheads at four corners. It's currently just fenced off and vacant. At one time, it housed a small diner at that location. The current property is on the market. We have a person who has stepped forward indicating that she has entered into a purchase and sales agreement for the .03 acres, approximately 1,310 square feet, that is the lot. And she is hoping to be able to purchase it and donate it to the town. Her idea is for public open space or public park, some sort of a quiet restive space in the downtown that would give people a place to sit and enjoy the downtown experience, perhaps with some shade trees or something along those lines. Obviously, we don't have any design in place. At current rate, it's assessed at 25,000. The town would see a loss of approximately $250 in taxes based on our current town tax rate. And we need to know, that is the staff, if we are to proceed, whether or not the board would consider accepting this donation. She is asked that the donation be restricted for public open space or public park for a minimum of 15 years, so that in fact, her dream of what this would become could be a reality, at least for the foreseeable future.
Stuart, this is the small lot that's fenced off currently, where the diner used to be, next to, between Fiddleheads and Katie Cleaver's building there, correct?
Board, any questions, any comments on that?
The record would indicate that I am recusing myself from discussion.
Okay.
Participation in any part of this.
It's what they call a pocket park, where I come from. What a great idea. And the person who is donating it is to be thanked.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. It's a good use for that little tiny piece of property that I'm not sure you could even put a whole building in there.
When I lived in New York, there was a park about the same size, maybe a little deeper. And on the back wall, they had falling water over a rough brick surface. It was also lit at night. It really just used to wash out the sound of the city. And a nice place to visit, so I'm all for it.
Very much in favor of it and gracious for the donation? John?
Yeah, I think it's a great donation, and the use is something that's needed downtown anyway, so I don't think there's any holdups there. The only thing that I would ask, although I don't think anything would come up, is that we just do a little research, make sure there's no issues that go along with any donation. I don't think anything will pop up whatsoever, but I wouldn't want to see, you know, all of a sudden, we have to dig up something and it costs $10,000, $20,000, whatever it happens to be.
Fryer grease in the ground.
I don't see that happening, but I just want to make sure that that's done, and other than that, there's no issue whatsoever.
She has already done that due diligence, using Paul Miller, who is an environmental scientist, and Jim Seacor. There are no issues associated with this. She didn't want to inherit those kinds of things either.
Right.
And again, the VCRD discussions for downtown identified pocket parks and green spaces, one of the priorities of the citizenry of those meetings, so.
I move we accept the donation.
Second?
We assume there is a clean title search on that, too?
That would be necessary for transfer of property.
Just ask the guy next to you.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'm just pointing out who did them, because everyone was talking. Okay, all in favor? We have six in favor, one recusal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Approved. Next item is appointments to boards and commissions. We have two appointments to address today. We have a development and review board, a one, three-year term.
I move we nominate George Kokoras, or Charles Kokoras, to an incumbent to fill the position.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Is that everybody? Tom, did you?
I think so.
Hi, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, that's unanimous, thanks. And the second one is the planning commission.
I move that the select board reappoint Donald Campbell to the planning commission for a four-year term.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? That is also unanimous. That is all we have for right now. And then we'll managers review. Oh, I'm sorry, this is the process and policy.
I'm jumping the gun.
Okay, you're jumping the gun. We just wanted to touch on the manager review, the process and policy. Set up a timetable. Do you want to carry that on now at 8:20, or do you want to?
No.
How about this? I'll take a comment from everybody. We'll put something together, and so we have something to work on next time.
I guess what I...
John, what's your?
My standing on this is that something probably should have been done at the beginning of last year in order to prep this. The main goal for us here is really goal-setting and reevaluating. And I think it would be unfair to evaluate on something that wasn't presented ahead of time. So for that reason, this year might be lost. So for that reason, I'll retract my statement that I think an evaluation needs to be done specifically this year. But I think it needs to be laid out for July, our first meeting in July, exactly how it's going to be done, what the expectations are. So as long as it's done within that time, I think we'll be set. Aside from that, the one thing I would like to see, because I think it will become part of the review, is the manager's review with his staff. Because that's where we're getting the information from the town manager about how the others within the staff are acting. So I'd like to see his review process and how it works within our town office. So that I would like to see by the end of June.
Okay. Justin?
I haven't really developed much of an opinion on this one way or another as of yet, so.
Okay.
I'm open to, you know, going with the flow a little bit on this and seeing what we get a little later on as we start putting something together.
All right. James?
What he said.
All right.
Sharon?
I kind of concur with John. I don't think we can rush this. I think it needs to be well thought out and well put together. And I know a couple of other board members are doing some research on this. So I would like to kind of hold off until we get their research in place and, or at least get the information, and then we can form a policy.
Okay.
Doing this right, I think, forces us to focus on specific areas of strategic leadership. I think in the process that we build, we need to have interaction frequently with Stu so that we can refine whatever document we come up with and refine the parameters that we use to judge. And I think we should say to ourselves, it's going to be a six-month process to get to the workable, to the workable document that we can use.
Easily, I think.
Thomas?
I guess as far as the agenda, review process slash policy, I think really it's policy slash process. I think the board has to decide whether or not it wants to adopt a policy on managerial evaluation and where that goes, to answer to John's concern. And I think what Michael has done is laid out some ideas that he wants to and will share about strategic objectives for us all to consider in open forum. But I think also this board has to decide whether or not there is a need and a want for such a policy. And that's something we can talk about when you get a little bit more substance. But I think policy precedes process.
Okay. Well, my feeling is similar. It's two different parts to this. You're going to need to decide why we're doing it, what the goals are and all that. And there's going to be mechanics of it, which is going to be whether it's paperwork to fill out or a schedule or whatever. We're going to have to figure out what that is. So, you know, I've made a proposal to try and work on the mechanics of it, just to see, compare what other towns are doing around Vermont that are even vetted. And then I think we need to have a good discussion on policy. So we'll try and get that on an upcoming agenda, and I'll try to put this into some kind of literal...
I think above and beyond that, I know we're talking about the review of the town staff and the town manager, but a big piece that goes along with that is the goals that we set for ourselves as a board. And really, the way that our org chart works is that we have these goals. We don't have necessarily the time to be able to work with our staff. We have a town manager that does that job. So our goals are going to be his goals, in a sense. So I don't want to go six months without setting certain goals for ourselves, be broad or specific, whatever it might be. And I don't think it's unreasonable to even set five goals, or whatever it happens to be before the year's out. And then, yes, when we come down to a specific policy and a structure, that's going to take time. I can't argue with that.
Great, thank you.
Let me add one thing to what John said. John put up a very good point. You can have goals, but we can have goals for ourselves, we can have goals for the town manager. We need also to build the metrics that show those goals, show how well we perform, for example, in that area.
Okay, to the manager's review.
Yes, two issues for you. There wasn't anything really in my report other than I indicated we should have the water and sewer fund budgets prepared for you. I handed those out at the beginning of the meeting. You each now have the budget proposal. And I am pleased to indicate that the budget, water fund budget is proposed at 3.1% increase, sewer fund at 1.4% increase. And I'm sure everybody will be pleased to know that our finance director, Melissa Courier, is projecting that the water fund rates and the sewer fund rates need not change if these budgets are adopted.
Okay.
The second thing, please. For all of those folks that are listening.
How many years has that been, or hasn't been a constant rate increase?
We've had rate increases over the last four years, essentially to catch up on our depreciation deficiencies. This year, we will not see an increase should these budgets be adopted as proposed. And we're actually working on projections because of the water bond vote again, trying to give you and the voters at home and the folks in the community projections over the next four years for where we see those rates moving or not. Because we've made it. We're there with our depreciation. And now it's a matter of maintaining the budgets and keeping them in line with our capital plans as well as our operational goals. Excuse me.
Well, thank the staff and Linda included for...
She heard that one. The second thing is, the town clerk approached me late last week with a suggestion that we move our bond vote up rather than place it in the midst of the primary and the general election. Tried to get it done before here. And in our conversations, he recommended June 17th for the vote. It's a Tuesday. If, in fact, you approve that tonight, we do have sufficient time to get the warning in the paper, to have a public hearing at least 10 days before the vote, which would be at our regular meeting, June 9. And I know we have some other things on the agenda that night, but I don't suspect it's going to be a very long or lengthy presentation. But if the board is willing, I've talked with our engineer. He is prepared and ready. I'm working with Terry on those projections. We should have those ready so that when that presentation is made on the 9th of June, eight days before the vote, we'll be able to show people what it's going to cost them now and through the next four to five years and how this project will impact only minimally the actually operational account and operational expenses of the town. So it's up to you. I know we were talking about last time about pushing it back to September. But now, I'm being asked by the town clerk to consider moving it up to minimize the impact that the town clerk's office is going to be facing once the primary starts, the primary season starts, and then the general election season starts.
Board? John, how do you feel about that?
Wasn't here last meeting to voice my opinion, so whatever you guys would like to do is fine with me. I think that we do need to figure out something, some solution to this problem. And, you know, if it goes up for vote and it gets voted down again, it gives us more time to develop a new plan. So having time on our side isn't necessarily a bad thing. We do have adequate time to let people know about it. We have a couple of meetings before then that they can come in and speak, so it would work.
I think it's timely. I'm fine with moving it up.
You're fine with it? Okay.
I'm fine.
Sharon?
Yeah, as long as we have some adequate visuals as we make the presentation so that people can see in black, on white, what the issues are, what the costs are. I think it's fine.
Having confidence in the community, having eight days' time to look at this, I guess I'm comfortable, because we did trip over ourselves, both the presentation and the result. And I just don't want to have that repeated, because I don't see any benefit of having another bond vote defeated. So if we can do it and do it well, I'm all for it. If we, during the process, find that we're going to have some issues, I don't care what we've done to that point. I would pull it right off of the ballot.
My concern is the finance, you know, being able to put a clear financial picture in front of the voters at that hearing and have, you know, so they go into the vote knowing what this will cost and what our plan is. So if we can pull that off, I'm fine with that. That's my biggest...
I think we can.
Okay. Well, then let's go on that, on that premise. That's all I have. Okay. Tom, any other business?
No.
Michael?
No, sir.
Sharon?
No, sir.
James?
No, sir.
Justin?
John? Uh, yeah. Always at the front of my mind is the recruitment and retention efforts. And again, Michael, thank you for presenting us with that list. My question's going to sound redundant in that I would like to see some further information on who these potential customers are to the town, only so that when this comes in every month, I can track it in some way. Right now, if I see this come through, I'm going to see the not-so-specific titles. I understand why we're using it, absolutely. But, you know, I could see retail, all three of those retailers could be the same person to me. So some way, I'd like to be able to track that. I don't know what we can put in place. I know we've talked about it before and the confidentiality that goes along with it. But I'd like to see something just so I can track it, and I don't know how you would like to work that.
And that would be my question, just what would be the best mechanism to do that without giving away some confidential and sensitive information?
Sign an ID number or something like that as a conversation starts, and then you can follow it and see if it continues through.
Sure. That's perfect. Like we said, it can have a code name, do whatever. But just so it's not, we have three retailers, three food and beverage, just something on there so I can say, oh, look at that, retail 11157 moved up to level two. Oh, it moved up to level three, now it's stuck at level three.
It could even be the date of the initial conversation with the letter, if there's more than one that day.
So that way, when we see this, and I can say, hey, that's been at level three for three months now. Michael, what's the holdup? What can we do to help them?
Sure, yeah, I can do that.
I mean, that's the main point of this, and I think this is a huge step forward, seeing all of this. It shows all the hard work that you put forth, so I definitely appreciate it.
Just so you know, there's a bunch of additions to that list, too. We had our recruitment and retention meeting just after I put this in the packet. So we added about, I think, probably around four or five additional projects on top of that, so.
Great. And then on top of that, the one thing that I want to follow up on is the contact list as well. It's been some time since we talked about that, and we're going to try and populate it. I haven't seen that come through. Maybe I missed it.
Which, when you say contact, just refresh me.
We developed our list of our top 25 employers in town.
You're just looking for the contacts for those 25?
I just, yeah, and that we're reaching out, we're making communication, because I would assume that as we talk about goals and expectations, one's going to be customer satisfaction. I, I say customer, just because they are providing a significant service to our town in, in that they employ the majority of the people. So, I call them customers. I'd like to see some sort of customer survey, something along those lines, so I want to make sure that you've talked to them. I don't want to give them a dry survey, that's not really fair. It's not fair to you or to them, so I just want to make sure that progress is being made on that contact sheet.
Sure.
And, you know, it'll start off with the HR guy, then you'll, you'll step into the office, and then all of a sudden, you'll be talking to someone else, and, you know, we'll roll from there, and then all of a sudden, your ear's on the door and actually in the office, and hopefully, we'll be able to grow that way.
Great.
One last, if I could. I'll be, I'll be emailing the board. You've got a calendar in this packet. Think about special work sessions, water, sewer fund budgets. Normally, we do that on Saturday morning, eight till noon, so take a look at the calendar for May and June, and I'll be emailing out something so I can get your feedback on that.
Okay. And we're meeting next Monday.
We are meeting next Monday.
At the town hall, so we can solidify it maybe.
Really just for warrants and other business.
Right.
Five-thirty? Five-thirty, we said.
Five-thirty, okay.
Five-thirty, okay.
Who to adjourn?
I just wanted to do a, a quick congratulations to all our college graduates out there. This is college graduation week, so thank you all, and we have a motion to adjourn, and we have a second, and do I have any discussion?
Uh-uh.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Yeah, it is unanimous. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.